Tribute, would you be so kind as to start us with a pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our own.
Gary, would you please say the prayer?
Father, we invite you to this meeting by your spirit. We are, in fact, one nation, under God, and we look to you for your guidance, your wisdom, your direction in all that we think, say, do, and plan here today, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Do you need a roll call, please?
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor Lorenz.
Here.
Counselor Segola.
Here.
Counselor Elthorff.
Here.
Mayor Becker.
Here.
The Corum, Mr. Craig.
Let's go over the consent agenda. Did you guys have time when you did that?
I did.
As did I, yes.
We approve the consent agenda?
I second that.
And moved in to second it to approve the consent agenda? Any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Lorenz.
Aye.
Counselor Segola.
Aye.
Counselor Elthorff.
Aye.
Counselor Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Chief, first round?
Swear in?
Swear in.
Sworn in.
We rewrote. I think everybody was kind of here pretty much to, uh, here for the last meeting where I introduced Mr. Porter, a code enforcement officer, today, now that he's got all of his fancy duds and his badge. Make it official. All right. All ready? Do better than that. I have to state your name.
I'm Shane Porter.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Under the penalty of perjury?
Under the penalty of perjury.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States of America?
And the laws of the United States of America.
And of the state of Colorado?
And the state of Colorado.
And the city of Montavista Charter?
And the city of Montavista Charter.
Ordinances?
Ordinances.
Code of Ethics?
Code of Ethics.
And mission statement?
Mission statement.
And the laws of the county of Rio Grande?
And the laws of the county of Rio Grande.
I swear to carry out all my duties?
I swear to carry out all my duties.
Acting in accordance?
Acting in accordance.
With the above referenced guidelines?
With the above referenced guidelines.
And that I will faithfully perform?
And I will faithfully perform.
The duties of code enforcement officer?
The duties of code enforcement officer.
To which I have been appointed?
To which I have been appointed.
And upon which I am about to enter.
And upon which I am about to enter.
Right, listen.
Thanks, sir.
Did you get a good enough picture, Al?
Yeah, we gotta get one more of you guys shaking hands.
I've got a few pictures to you.
This is one's here, right, Nita?
Yes, that one's here.
Shane, just so you know, uh, we do not, I don't feel, this is about you, so that's why we're not gonna stand up. We can do what we want if you want, but as far as council goes, this is about you, so, thank you.
Smile. Thanks.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the pictures.
He was a little busy today.
Had to earn his keep early, had to earn the badge today, huh?
He did.
Mr. Douglas? Can you discuss the video?
Yeah, so, um, I was asked, there, Ford, I was asked to address you guys about the video we talked about last time at the last meeting, and that you guys had a few questions about that. Um, to answer a few of those questions, I heard a little bit about, uh, some of the questions you had, and, uh, you know, the, the city will own all the footage and, and have all the rights to the video. Um, the, the, anything that is recorded by the company, they also have the rights to that footage, you know, actually, passing cars on a street or whatever, I mean, they, they keep rights to that, but you are, also have rights to that footage and you use it however you want.
That was my question.
Okay. Well, was there some other questions about it?
I was curious how long it's expected to have that complete?
I, I told, I, I asked them if they could do it in like less than thirty days. And then I also, I don't want it to be very long because, you know, three to five minute video is just gonna be long and boring. This is basically statistics. Here's how many people are here, this is the average salary, this is how many unemployed, this is how many are employed, these are the big, um, employers in town, you know, it's, it's basically a, uh, an info commercial for potential businesses that want to come into town, so it's just gonna be short and sweet.
So is that like a month or six months or?
It said thirty days.
No, 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 yeah, you'll, you'll get it in thirty days and it'll be under three minutes, it'll be, yeah. I told them honestly, probably about a minute, maybe two at the most. I don't want it to be very long because, um, it's a, you know, business people are very busy, and if I sent them a seven minute video, the chances are they probably wouldn't watch it. And, um, and again, it is a thousand dollars. Um, and just, uh, if any of you guys have ever been to Alamosa Movie Theater, he, uh, worked on one of the commercials in that one, which is the, the goat in the, in the theater, I'm sure everybody has recognized that commercial, where he was talking about buying insurance from a lizard, why would you bring a goat to the movie theater, that was some of the work that he used to do, so, yeah. Yeah, that was a pretty funny commercial.
Oh, that was good.
Yeah, it was pretty clever.
Do we get any fun stuff like that in ours, or is it all gonna be serious stuff?
It's gonna, uh, it's gonna be pretty serious, to be honest, I mean, 'cause a lot of the business owners, they just want the facts, just give, give me the information, give me as much as possible, and I'm trying to cram as much of it into a short amount, 'cause you don't have much attention span, or they'll start fast forwarding through the video.
Right, true. Guilty as charged, if you've done that.
Yeah, yeah, but you can have the footage and you can also re-edit it later, uh, for something else, um, you know, like, you know, visit Montavista, or, you know, anything like that, you can reuse that footage, you'll have to pay him to re-edit it, but he can use it.
Put it on our website.
Yeah, you put it on your website, and, you know, we can, we can change the footage so that it's more like, hey, come and visit Montavista, and more appeal to just the average show citizen, rather than just business owners. So we can, we can cut it up and change it up however you want after you, after we have it.
Perfect.
That was good. Good for you to see it.
And it's, uh, I don't know if any of you guys know or anything, but, um, I got into agreeing to a thousand dollars to do it, so. And I was mostly because, normally it's, I'll be honest with you, mostly the time is more like three thousand dollars, but, uh, we had, uh, some of that footage donated, uh, from the film crew before, and so there's a lot of footage he doesn't need to get anymore, so he was able to reduce the price.
Nice.
I think we already approved that.
We didn't.
No, sir. The point of ours is that you would need to approve, uh, the expenditure of a thousand dollars?
Okay.
For this video project.
We get so moved that we approve a thousand dollars for the video.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve a thousand dollars for the video? Any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Segola?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Elthorff?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Well, this is easy, I got some other, no, I'm just kidding. Hey, thanks, Mayor, thanks, we appreciate it.
Thanks, Ron.
Citizen comments. City Council welcomes you to, welcomes your unscheduled comments, please limit comments to three minutes. Council will not take action at the same meeting. Does anybody have anything? Yes, sir.
At the last city council meeting, uh, discussion was of the availability and cost of doing an appraisal on the two city properties. Uh, since I used to be an appraiser, I offered to do this recently. I provided those results to Forrest on the twenty-seventh, and asking to send them to you guys and to Ron. Um, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have about my conclusions.
Well, I sent them to Ron, council members.
I was gonna say, I didn't get it. That's okay.
But I sent them to Ron as the party that needed to use them, so.
I, I appreciate that, and I was planning on, uh, talking with you right after the meeting about that, so, thank you very much.
So, I'm not, I'm not clear, did you not receive it?
Forrest got them and sent them to Ron.
But not to you guys?
No.
Right, we're, we're not really responsible for the payment or anything, it's Mr. Douglas.
Yeah, Ron's gonna be discussing that with you.
Fair enough. What I said was that there's four appraisers available, they're available mid-August to early September.
Okay.
Thank you, Charles.
Good.
Appreciate your work on that.
Any other comments? Yes, ma'am?
I just wanna say that, uh, the flower pots on Adams are still alive and well, thanks to three business owners who have been watering them, and I watered the other two, and I just wanted to say yay for those wonderful businesses for doing their job.
Mm-hmm.
So, I thought maybe we could do something in the paper, I'll give you a little bit to thank them for doing such a nice job.
I think all of them look good. I, surprisingly, nice and flowery for this year, they, everything looks good.
Yes, it's pretty.
Staff proposal, reports and actions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, um. Well, as I had in my report, we did submit the, uh, planning grant application to DOLA in advance of the July thirty-first deadline for the, um, Sky High Park Planning Grant, and, um, and Kristy Doon did review it prior to the submittal, and she said it looked pretty good, so we'll hear back from them in September on that, so, fingers crossed. The main thing I wanted to ask the council for this evening is a request for a budget extension by our charter, uh, section fifty-three. The charter requires that honor before the first day of October each year, or as on such a day as shall be fixed by the council, the city manager shall submit to council his annual budget setting forth in detail all the information for the finances for the next year. Jenny's really doing a good job getting things caught up. We anticipate that in September, we'll lash come full on with our budget amendments, so timing-wise, we'd like a little extra time, we did that two years ago as well, so that we could work on budget, 'cause we have a series of meetings with the council, with the management team and everything to go through that, um, and probably spend some time in September, uh, fine-tuning a few things for the management team, and then have meetings with y'all in October, and then actually have the draft, uh, in front of council for the first reading in November, if you agree to that, so, now, basically, that's my request.
So it's just for an extension?
Right, right, we still need to, you know, we still have to have the budget done and approved, um, before December thirty-first, and it's our intent to have it done and approved before the, you know, at the second meeting in November. So we'll meet the state requirements, um, but it'll give Jenny some time, you know, we've been talking about some things that she'd like to see that do a little bit different than we did in last year's budget, or in this current year's budget, uh, most of which I think are good ideas, but we'll have to kind of structure those out. You know, they're not major issues, I think some of them are style, if you will, but, uh, you know, you try to, um, work with finance director, you know, style that's manageable for the finance director and for the city, and, um, she's got some good ideas, so I think, uh, that would bear a little bit of extra work this year.
Is, is there, will this budget extension affect anything else?
No, counselor, it won't, um, you know, basically, we're in our current budget year, so it won't have any effect on what we're currently doing, and, uh, you know, we'll get it adopted at the end of November, and, you know, from a cycle standpoint, you know, new fiscal year doesn't start till January, so it really shouldn't have any, um, major impact on our operations.
Okay. I would, uh, move to extend that budget extension?
So, second.
It's been moved and seconded to extend the budget. We clarify that until November eighth? Until November eighth. That's the first meeting in November, correct? Yes. Okay. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Elthorff?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, then one other item that I didn't have in my written report, but, um, so, uh, Montavista URA is currently working on a number of properties, so we've made some progress on actual properties, uh, through a combination of, uh, different efforts, uh, you know, we sent out eleven, uh, letters to property owners, and we have one that we're negotiating with, and another one that accepted our offer, so those two are, um, goes within the concept of then we have to do all the paperwork for the federal grants on them, do the environmentals and the noise hazard stuff, and all that other fun paperwork we have to do. Uh, we also have three other properties we've identified, which will probably fit into the mix there. Realistically, um, we probably won't start any demos until the spring, uh, based on timing and, um, getting titles and all that other fun stuff, but we're definitely making some progress, um, on the program, and actually, I'll be going to the Colorado, um, Small Communities Housing Workshop, uh, next Thursday, um, where I'm gonna present the program to other folks in the state, there's a lot of interest in what we're doing, and since we've already, uh, created the template, um, by creating the policies, procedure manual, all those, honestly, years of work to get there, um, they'll benefit from our experience, so, uh, that should be fun to present, and, uh, you know, I think we are, you know, once again, I realize it's been a slower process than we would like it to have been, um, but we're kind of at the point now where we can see some daylight in it, so I'm pretty excited, I think for sure we have, um, four demo properties, and maybe a rehab property, that one's, we're still working on, but, um, and actually, the environmental inspections on two of the properties will probably happen Saturday, so we're, we're making some gains, our envi- our historical environmental review consultant retired, so Mark Garcia is, uh, hunting up a new one, and we'll both be at that conference Thursday, um, grabbing some people, and ma- and we've got a couple phone calls out, and we'll get somebody, um, the closest person was Durango, but I think there's another firm in Durango that does it, so, you know, lots of moving parts, but we are making progress, it's just,
great.
You know, um, at times, it's been a little frustrating, but we are getting there, and, and so I'm, I'm feeling like we're, you know, turning the corner on that, and hopefully next spring, we can maybe, uh, do three or four demos all at one time, and that'll make a good impact on the community, and we're looking, we're not looking forward to demos, but we definitely need them.
Yeah.
So.
Does this include, uh, does any of this include the property on Franklin, the demolished?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so that's in the works?
Oh, yeah.
Perfect.
Yes, that's a highly notable one, so, yes, that is, uh, definitely in the mix of, of the properties we've identified, so. Just gotta do all the paperwork, and that's forty-five days of paperwork at the minimum, um.
Wow.
Going back and forth, particularly the environmental stuff, it's like, if you ever, if you ever wanna see what a, um, a brain freeze looks like, I can show you the environmental way. It's, um.
Is that forty-five on each property?
Well, combined, I mean, it may be sixty days total, but, yeah, it, it takes about that long, parts of the efforts are combined, and we're trying to negotiate with the environmental folks on doing things a couple ways that they maybe haven't before, but we think they, they follow the letter of the law, they just have to mark, and one of those folks is gonna have a conference call Tuesday, hopefully hash that out, and if they accept our methodology, which they should, um, then that will speed things up a little bit too, so we can kind of do a gang of them, like, here's this group of them, instead of, you know, they, they like a very individualized, um, piece, the shipo part, the state, well, they don't call that anymore, they call it History Colorado, that's State Historic Preservation Office, they're like individual properties, but when we get a consultant to come in, they can assess the properties all at one time, um, but that consult works usually pretty slow, they have to go read a bunch of archival stuff and make sure there's nothing historically super significant about the properties and the ones we've identified, I don't think so, so, could be, you never know, but, you know, honestly, I don't think that we're gonna run into that issue with these, they don't have any super cool architectural things about them, I mean, that's always one of the considerations, and they're not like nineteen seventeen legacy houses or anything, so, it, uh, it'll come along.
Good.
And that's all I have this evening, unless you got anything else. All righty, thank you. Donation to Crime Stoppers and Fallen Hero Fund?
Is that you?
Yeah, that was me. So, the chief had mentioned it, you know, he mentioned Crime Stoppers several times, and I think we need to act on that as well as the Fallen Hero.
You need to speak up.
Oh, sorry. Yes. So, the chief had mentioned, uh, a couple of times, the crimes, a donation for Crime Stoppers, since that program is running, and also, then last month, he, last meeting, he talked to us about the Fallen Hero Fund, and I think we also need to, um, approve some money for that as well.
What's your proposal?
We have fifteen hundred left in the discretionary fund for the rest of the year.
Actually, I was gonna, uh, regarding Fallen Hero Fund, it, wanted to get a little feedback from the chief about that. There was no amount mentioned, is there a, um, usual that you know of, that, uh, bigger cities or smaller cities?
No, I, I think it's just based on what you can afford, really, I mean, I think Adams County gave two thousand dollars, and that's a huge county, um, plenty of people, so I think, put it in perspective, and they'll be super happy with anything they get, I mean, just the commitment from this far away will be amazing.
I think it would be nice if that's something we could work into the budget for next year as well, to possibly add some more to that, after what we decided to do this evening.
More council discretionary funds for next year, okay, we'll put that in.
Right. So what's your suggestion? This is sort of your, maybe?
You're involved with, you, you mentioned something about that, you're involved with Crime Stoppers, so.
I don't think I should, I, that's kind of, I think that's a bit of a conflict of interest, to be honest, so, I'll leave that up to you, as far as the Fallen Hero Fund, I mean, if we started even with three hundred, and then we could make another donation next year? I think that would be appropriate.
And the same for Crime Stoppers, is that?
Is it one donation, or is it two separate donations?
It's two separate donations, two separate funds.
Okay.
So you should probably vote on them separately.
Right.
Well, I would move that we, uh, contribute three hundred to the Crime Stoppers Fund for this year out of our discretionary fund.
And I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded that we donate three hundred dollars out of the City Council Discretionary Fund to the Crime Stoppers? Any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Elthorff?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Segola?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And, I know I would move to approve three hundred for the Fallen Heroes Fund as well?
Second.
It's been moved and segmented, we donate three hundred dollars out of discretionary fund for the Fallen Hero Fund? Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Elthorff?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. On a side note, we had our first tip, two felon, fugitive arrested, based on that tip.
Nice.
And now via reward county, I don't know what that is, the board will have to decide, but to the penalty.
Right, great.
Good. Those two good ones, dude.
Yeah?
That's awesome.
Should've said that first, but might've made it more.
Give it till it hurts, Gary.
No, it's good news.
So, chief, you wanna give your pitch on the National Night Out?
Sure.
Before we go into executive session?
Sure.
'Cause it's right around the corner?
It is, uh, so the seventh, Chapman Park, starts at five-thirty, pretty much have, uh, all first responders, all city kind of employee representation, all city employees will be there, police department will be there, lots of, uh, help from Rio Grande Prevention Partners, San Luis Valley Health will be there, kids games, free food, and it's just a night against crime, is really what it's about, but with that comes, uh, hopefully some education about prevention, uh, meeting your neighbors, understanding your community, being a part, just, uh, facilitating a bigger look at, at how we in Neighborhood Watch and, and Crime Prevention can work together, Counselor Johnson is sporting one of the fancy shirts that the ladies got going, and that's what it's all about, um, it's the Night Out Against Crime, really, we're hoping to get several hundred people in Chapman Park, eating and enjoying, and I have a DJ with some music and food and entertainment, it'll be a bouncy house, a pugil arena from the National Guard. Who am I missing?
A dunk tank.
Dunk tank, a dunk tank, of all things. So the mayor and I will be in the dunk tank, but other than that, I guess it don't take the volunteers, I think we're gonna do a dollar a ball, I think all counselors were thinking about volunteering.
Gary was appointed.
Yes, I think everyone should just at least do.
So, there you go, your counselors, it's your chance to dunk me and them for a dollar a ball. I don't think I got elected, though, I don't think I passed the vote, but whatever, yeah. Grab all the dunk tank, yeah, I think I put that out of my mind.
Or was a real democratic.
You missed the meeting, Gary, sorry.
Yeah. We're open to raise a few funds for Neighborhood Watch, that's, that's kind of our goal, plus the na- the Night Against Crime and meeting your neighbors, so please, come out, uh, we wanna make it a success, and we can, maybe we can beat Alamosa and have more people in, in the park than they will, 'cause they're doing the same thing in Cole Park, same night, sixteen thousand communities, thirty-eight million people, all fifty states. Wow. Pretty exciting, Montavista's one of them.
Yay.
And as well as showcasing that, it's, we're doing the city. Type that in, right? Right, so the city open house, you know, we, we're not gonna do that in September this year, so we're definitely gonna have, you know, like, some public works, obviously, the police department there, that's kind of our equipment display stuff, we're also gonna have some information on the city there, and, um, you know, we've got a bunch of employees that are working at it as well, and, you know, we're happy to grill up a bunch of burgers and dogs, that'll be fun. Very good.
Forrest got some practice in Alamosa today.
He would have a test.
Forrest? Forrest?
Might need help with the dogs, the grill's big enough for two people, so.
It'll probably be warm there when I'm all wet.
That's what I was just thinking. Dry off later, that one.
Any other questions?
I hope somebody's gonna be left behind to watch the town while we're all at Chapman Park.
Well, it, actually, your instructions are lock your door and come out. So, no, everybody's supposed to be there.
Put your dog outside.
Right, turn on your alarm.
Lock your door.
All that good stuff. Sounds good. All right, thank you. Your work.
Great. Um, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, four B.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we go into executive session, is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathor?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And, uh, Mayor Becker, before you read that part, can we clarify to the public that the council will reconvene the regular meeting only to adjourn it and no further actions will be taken? Okay. So we're gonna, do we, yeah, okay. Yeah, that's the statement, so that, you know.
Okay.
No one hangs around and wants to see what's gonna happen, there's nothing, there's nothing gonna happen.
Nothing gonna happen.
No more fun.
Need a diary disc now or right when we go into session?
Now.
Okay. Sorry, I'll get the straight one these days, I don't like this folder, just so everybody knows, the orange folder is not friendly. August second, twenty eighteen, and the time is six thirty-seven. For the record, I am presiding off, Sir Mayor Dale Becker, as required by the open meetings law, this executive session is being electronically recorded. Also present at this executive session are the following persons, Kathy Lorenz, Kathy Ellathor, Gary Johnson, Victor Segala, Anita Vance, Forrest Newberg, and Michael Troyal. This is an executive session for the following purposes. I caution each participant to confine all discussion to the stated purpose of the executive session and that no formal action may occur in the executive session. If at any point in the executive session, any participant believes that the discussion is going outside the proper scope of the executive session, please interrupt the discussion and make an objection.